We all know that carefree person who's a little too carefree. Thankfully, Ion Water has your back. So the next time they think about letting the water flow forever, they'll think twice. Ion Water, create your account and start saving today. You can also download the app on your iPhone or Android device.
You will come to the Spooky Cinema on October 25th.
Hey man, what are you doing?
I'm telling people to buy their tickets today.
Oh, cool. Hey, can you say blah blah blah?
I do not say blah blah blah. Buy your tickets now.
Madam Mayor, are you ready to start the meeting? Alright, she's ready.
Welcome to the City of Pinellas Park's City Council Meeting. Our city offers superior parks, premium recreational services, exceptional public safety resources, optimal investment opportunities, and more. Our mayor and city council welcomes you to tonight's meeting.
Good evening. It is Thursday, October 23rd of 2025. We're calling to order our city council meeting. We will have an invocation and pledge of allegiance. Please rise if you wish.
I gotta tell you, it's nice to see this place full. Devout with me if you please. Heavenly Father, dear Lord, we come to you at this time. And Lord, we're thankful for the opportunity that you give us to serve this community, to serve the residents and businesses of this community. Lord, we pray that you be with our military men and women, whether they're afar or at home, be with their families, Lord. And Lord, we're thankful for the employees that we have here, for the work that they do and how they protect us and serve us, and how they take care of our residents. And we're thankful for the residents that we have, Lord, and we pray that each and every one of them will become more involved in the city's business, Lord. And Lord, I just pray that you be with us throughout this meeting and ask that you be with Brother Tim as he is at home not feeling well tonight, Lord. And ask all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
My question is to the pride of the United States of America, and to the republic where the Lord stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We have a full crowd tonight. We have a full agenda. And first on the agenda this evening is our fire department with some new firefighters that are coming in, and their swearing-in ceremony.
Yes, it's not on.
Your mic's not working.
There we go. Sorry about this. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you again for having us. We get the privilege to welcome two new firefighters into our family. We have Zachary Bailey and Mark Stevens. Zachary comes to us from Diamond Dale, Michigan. He officially started with the department on August 6th. He has a bachelor's degree in applied science with a major in public safety and a minor in public service administration. He's been working in the field of fire and EMS since 2012 up in Michigan. He is married to his wife Ashley, and he has two kids, Lyle and Everly. Mark comes to us from Maysville, Kentucky. He officially started with the department on September 24th. He has a bachelor's degree in history and started his career in medicine as a nurse working in the ICU. Although Mark is currently an EMT with the department, he is starting on his journey to become a paramedic. Gentlemen, I'm gonna have you turn towards me as we swear you in. Alright, so repeat after me. I, say your full name. Same time. Do solemnly pledge to uphold the laws and constitution sorry, of the United States of America, the state of Florida, and the city of Pinellas Park. I pledge to remain ever vigilant, protecting our citizens' lives, health, homes, and property. I pledge to accomplish our mission through education and training, and the commitment to accountability and respect. I pledge to accept with honor the duties and responsibilities of firefighter for the Pinellas Park Fire Department. Congratulations. So, thank you. Pinning Zachary tonight will be his wife, Ashley. And pinning Mark tonight will be his girlfriend, Jessica. Come on up.
Good. Thanks, guys.
Welcome to the family. Now it's my turn. While we are wrapping that up, it is our pleasure to offer the dais to Representative Bernie Jacques and Senator De Segley. If you guys, do you want to do it up there or down here at the podium? Whichever's best for you guys.
Go over there.
Over there.
Thank you so much for having us tonight. I'm State Senator Nick De Segley. You know, last session was very difficult to get some of these appropriation projects across the finish line. But certainly with myself and Representative Jacques knowing how important this is to Pinellas Park, to its residents. You all just seem to do things, I'm gonna be opinionated, just the right way. I appreciate the relationship that we have, the communication. And any project that comes across my desk that has the name Pinellas Park on it, I am gonna go out of my way to make sure that we're able to get that across the finish line. This project falls into that category. Great project for this community, and looking forward to working with you all again in 2026. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, and look, I echo what Senator De Segley said. It's truly a joy to work with the city of Pinellas Park. You all are the tip of the spear in letting your legislators know what you need. I often tell folks, when you're a legislator, you vote on everything, but there's no way you can know everything. And so it takes stakeholders in the community to put things on our radar, like this great project and this wonderful community. And we wouldn't have known if it wasn't for your advocacy. So keep it up, and so we can better serve our shared constituents, and make sure Pinellas Park remains the great community that we know it to be. Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you.
I just wanted to tell everybody a little bit about the project. It's for a neighborhood that's in the heart of our city. It's to improve streets, multimodal, to help kids get to school. It's located in an elementary school neighborhood, and we're really excited about it.
Is Ms. Sarah Bland here with the big crowd? Come on up. We get to continue with some of the fun that we enjoy as city council this evening. And November is Epilepsy Awareness Month. So I have a proclamation from the city and city council to present to Ms. Sarah. Whereas epilepsy is a brain disorder characterized by recurrent and unprovoked seizures that can affect anyone at any age at any time. Epilepsy is a spectrum disease comprised of many diagnoses, experiences, and include a wide range of seizure types. Core morbidity, control, severity, and outcome varies from person to person. Epilepsy is the fourth most common neurological disorder. Approximately 3.4 million people in the United States live with this active disease. 426,000 Floridians live with epilepsy, including 88,000 children here in Florida. And a greater education and improved access to care is needed. Not only in our schools, but in our communities. Which can be accomplished by passing a seizure safety litigation nationwide. So I already told Bart that the chief needs to kind of give some of those classes to us. You guys have already given us CPR and everything, so that all of the city staff knows about it. Whereas Epilepsy Awareness Month is a nationwide effort in November for Epilepsy Alliance of Florida to raise awareness about the changes, the conversation around epilepsy, seizures, and side effects. As well as the improvements that can be provided to save lives through care, advocacy, research, and new therapies, and public health and education. Therefore, actions during Epilepsy Awareness Month and any day of the year, it is important to increase the public knowledge about epilepsy and seizures, first aid, and the change, the way that people think about epilepsy and seizures. Now therefore, I Sandra Lee Bradbury, Mayor of the City of Pinellas Park, Florida, and on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim Epilepsy Awareness Month for November, and encourage the Pinellas Park residents to take actions together, and to use our brains to overcome the challenges of living with epilepsy, and accelerate therapies to stop the seizures, find cures, and save lives. And witness, I set my hand to cause the seal of the City of Pinellas Park, Florida, to be affixed on the 23rd day of October of 2025. I'm gonna give this to you, as well as the mic, so that you can tell our citizens a little bit about what's going on in our community.
Alright, so I am Sarah with Epilepsy Alliance Florida. And so, good evening, Mayor Bradbury, council, clerk, and all others gathered here in Pinellas Park. On behalf of Epilepsy Alliance Florida, I want to extend our heartfelt gratitude for this proclamation, recognizing November as Epilepsy Awareness Month. This proclamation helps cast light on the importance of awareness, education, and encourages the community support. This is an acknowledgement for the 1 in 26 people, 3.4 million people in the United States, including those here in Pinellas County, living with epilepsy. Epilepsy is the fourth most common neurological disorder that can strike at any age, yet remains the most misunderstood. It is surrounded by stigma and misinformation. At Epilepsy Alliance Florida, we work to provide resources, education, and advocacy for all of those affected. Through outreach, medical support, and community events, we aim to ensure nobody faces the spectrum of challenges epilepsy comes with. So again, thank you for shining light on epilepsy awareness, support, and it helps break down barriers and brings us one step closer to a more informed and inclusive community. Together, we can make a lasting difference in the lives of those living with epilepsy. Thank you all so much.
Our next council meeting that we have will be after Veterans Day. So one of our in-house veterans, I've invited Ms. LaSharon and some of our people that are here. Can I really quickly have everybody raise their hands that has served our country? Thank you very much. Mr. Ben Hart. Jim? Yes, you too. Thank you. Whereas, since the founding of our nation, American patriots have stepped forward to serve our country and defend our ways of life, dedicating themselves and their ideals of liberty, democracy, and justice. On the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month in 1918, hostilities ceased in World War I. And when they had been, the Congress designated November 11th to be legally public holiday depicting the cause of the world peace and to honor our veterans. And whereas, we owe our immense and enduring debt of gratitude to those who have worn the uniform for the United States, our soldiers, our sailors, our airmen, and our marines, and Coast Guard. and Coast Guard, for their courage, their dedication to duty, and selfless sacrifice. Whereas, our veterans and their service and in their return to civilian life embody the best of American spirit, continuing to strengthen our communities as leaders, innovators, and dedicated citizens. And whereas, our nation has one truly, one truly secured obligation to prepare and equip the brave men and women who are sent into harm's way, and to care for them and their loved ones when they all return home. Now therefore, I, Sandra Lee Bradbury, Mayor of the City of Pinellas Park, Florida, do hereby proclaim November 11th of 2025 as Veterans Day, and call upon the citizens to observe this day with the appropriate ceremonies and activities, in public gratitude and private reflection, for the valor, their courage, and their sacrifice as patriots. And witness, I set my hand to cause the seal of the City of Pinellas Park, Florida, to be affixed on the 23rd day of October of 2025. And I'm turning this over to LaSharon and the mic as well, and if there's any of our team members.
So, we really just want to say thank you. I know that City Council always say, and Bart always say, that we have a great team, and we really do. And as you can see by the men and women here that have, men and woman here, selflessly served, I mean, and it makes it easy for us to do it for the city. And so for me to have done it for 23 years, it just makes it easy for me to serve the city, serve the citizens, and serve our community. And I'm sure it's the same with the guys in black today, same thing with Mr. Denhart and Dan, and everyone else out in the audience, too. It's just, you know, it's easy to give back. Oh, well, we do have a video that's going to queue up, that's going to show all of the citizens, I mean, all of the employees, as well as their loved ones.
Up to you. All right. Good evening, Mayor Bradbury, Council, Clerk, and all others gathered here in Pinellas Park. On behalf of Epilepsy Alliance Florida, I want to extend our heartfelt gratitude for this proclamation, recognizing November as epilepsy awareness month. This proclamation helps cast light on the importance of awareness, education, and encourages the community support. This is an acknowledgement for the 1 in 26 people, 3.4 million people in the United States, including those here in Pinellas County, living with epilepsy. Epilepsy is the fourth most common neurological disorder that can strike at any age, yet remains the most misunderstood. It is surrounded by stigma and misinformation. At Epilepsy Alliance Florida, we work to provide resources, education, and advocacy for all of those affected. Through outreach, medical support, and community events, we aim to ensure nobody faces the spectrum of challenges epilepsy comes with. So again, thank you for shining light on epilepsy awareness, support, and it helps break down barriers and brings us one step closer to a more informed and inclusive community. Together, we can make a lasting difference in the lives of those living with epilepsy. Thank you all so much. Our next council meeting that we have will be after Veterans Day. So one of our in-house veterans, I've invited Ms. LaSharon and some of our people that are here. Can I really quickly have everybody raise their hands that has served our country? Thank you very much. Mr. Ben Hart. Jim? Yes, you too. Whereas, since the founding of our nation, American patriots have stepped forward to serve our country and defend our ways of life, dedicating themselves and their ideals of liberty, democracy, and justice. On the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month in 1918, hostilities ceased in World War I. And when they had been, Congress designated November 11th to be legally public holiday depicting the cause of the world peace and to honor our veterans. And whereas, we owe our immense and enduring debt of gratitude to those who have worn the uniform for the United States, our soldiers, our sailors, our airmen, and our Marines and Coast Guard, for their courage, their dedication to duty and selfless sacrifice. Whereas, our veterans and their service and in their return to civilian life embody the best of American spirit, continuing to strengthen our communities as leaders, innovators, and dedicated citizens. And whereas, our nation has one truly, one truly secured obligation to prepare and equip the brave men and women who are sent into harm's way, and to care for them and their loved ones when they all return home. Now therefore, I, Sandra Lee Bradbury, Mayor of the City of Pinellas Park, Florida, do hereby proclaim November 11th of 2025 as the United States Marine Corps Day, commemorating the Marine Corps' 250th birthday, and urge all the citizens to recognize the importance of the significance of their contribution to the United States Marine Corps has made and continues to make to the American way of life. And witness, I set my hand to cause the seal of the City of Pinellas Park, Florida, to be affixed on the 23rd day of October of 2025. And I want to present these proclamations to each of you. Thank you very much. And can I get any raw? Are there any other Marines in here this evening? I know Tracy is, we saw his wonderful picture up on the wall. So just wanted to say, I was a Marine Corps wife during the Gulf Wars, and just to know the sacrifice, not only of the Marines that they do to keep our way of life, as well as the families that serve, right beside them. So thank you guys so much for taking care of our country. We want to congratulate Lisa on 10 years of wonderful service. We present this award to Lisa Clayton in appreciation and recognition of 10 years of continuous and loyal service as of the 14th day of October of 2025. Mr. James King. James King, or better known as... began his career with the City of Pinellas Park in the stormwater department in 2015. By demonstrating dedication and a strong worth ethic, James was promoted to utility water technician in 2016. His commitment to excellence led to further advancements as he became a senior operator, showcasing his technical experience and leadership abilities. And in 2020, James was promoted to utility foreman, where he continues to excel in managing operations and supervising staff. Just two years later, he is advanced again to serve as utility supervisor, and he has now risen to his current position as utility director. Throughout his career, James has demonstrated dedication and a commitment to serving the community. His leadership has been instrumental in the success of the city's utility department. We want to congratulate James on your outstanding service and your continued success. So thank you. We present this certificate and award to James King in appreciation and recognition of 10 years of continuous and loyal service as of the 28th day of October of 2025. I'll present that to you. And can we have his work family, his family family up here, too?
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and Staff. My name is Gillian Rose. I'm the Community Engagement Program Manager for the City of Pinellas Park. And tonight, it is with great honor that I introduce to you the 2025 Citizens Academy graduates. Over the past seven weeks and eight sessions, these awesome citizens journeying through every department in our city. We had police, fire, community development, HR, OMB, IT, finance, public works, public relations, leisure services, city clerks, and city council. They didn't just learn facts, they connected to the heart of the city, and they left each session more engaged, more inspired, and more connected. And she is amazing as a leader, and I hope she continues to host this.
my comments will be brief, but it's pretty well a recap of everything that you heard last night. I had 10 little points. First of all, your facilities, your audiovisual and your PowerPoints. The camaraderie is absolutely amazing. All of your equipment displays and the knowledge that the people provided with those displays was just unbelievable. The knowledge of the presenters. And what was most amazing is the super cleanliness of all of your facilities, and in particular, your public works garage and your fire departments. I was absolutely amazed, I would have eaten off the floors. Jillian keeping us up to date every week with updates and changes. I appreciated city council coming and sitting and casually discussing items last night, it was marvelous. What was really not important, but was a bonus in fact, was the meals. So, on a scale of one to 10, Jillian and all of your people, I give you a full 10 marks of excellence. Thank you.
Just to be fair to the police department, they didn't get to see the police department, so I just, you know...
Okay, my name is Barbishing Todd McKeller now, since I married him. And I've sat where you are, and I've been all over the country talking to groups, and these people, I don't even know how to thank you. I mean, I've been where you are, and I'd much rather be out here with them. Because these citizens, people ask me, "We don't even live in Pinellas Park." And people say, "Why do you and Jeff love Pinellas Park?" Well, she helped us with all of your department leaders and your staff really be able to tell people why we love Pinellas Park. Thank you so much for everything you do. You're a wonderful city council, the best. Thanks.
Just wanted to say thank you so much for the opportunity to be a part of this amazing program. I'm new here to the city, about a year in, and we have a family-owned business, so it was a great opportunity to understand how we can develop as a family, a business, and the community. So, thank you so much.
So, I've just learned a valuable lesson, do not grab the microphone to hand it to Jillian, because he will be speaking. So, I am the current president of the Chamber of Commerce, and I will tell you the last six... My bad. I guess so. Over each one of these sessions, it's... I've literally been able to tell a business owner, yes, this is the point of contact you need to go see. I've been able to tell a manufacturer, yes, there's a reason you should come to the City of Pinellas Park and not go to Georgia. They should be contacting Nick here shortly, hopefully. If not, you'll see them next week on Wednesday. But truly, it's been an honor to be a part of this group. I think we've met several new people here that we've become friends. But truly, for the chamber, it's been extremely beneficial for me, because as Jillian knows, because I call her almost every week, it's very beneficial to be able to tell a business owner, yep, this is the point of contact, this is how you get things done. Oh, and by the way, the click it and fix it is actually working, and that someone does read it, doesn't go off to Neverland. So, it's, again, this class has been very beneficial for me, especially for someone that's lived in Pinellas County almost his entire life. Like I said, I find it very beneficial. And thank you to Jillian.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, it truly was an honor. Thank you again to staff for everything that you guys did, and I present to you our 2025 graduates, and they're going to come through and shake your hands. Thank you, guys.
See you tomorrow? Or Saturday?
Yes, Saturday, yes, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Yes, she is. Oh, that's... The last group that came and knocked it over before you guys, so thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Yes, we do, thank you. Thank you. And you filled out one of the things to volunteer? Yes, ma'am. I am back any way it can help this work. Thank you. Thank you. We'll talk. Thank you. Thank you. I love her dressers. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. I love her dressers. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. I love her dressers. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. I love her dressers. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Appreciate it. Congratulations. Thank you. I love her dressers. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. 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 Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Yes, she is. Thank you. 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 And you filled out one of the things to volunteer? Yes, ma'am. I am back any way it can help this work. Thank you. Thank you. We'll talk. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I love her dressers. I know, I think you would. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. I love her dressers. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. I love her dressers. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. One of those down there, so when they were doing their thing. He's going to have to find another one. No, you guys see the reason why we get to enjoy some of our council meetings quite a bit, and it's because of things like this. Next on our agenda is to allow citizens to come up and speak on anything that is not on the agenda this evening. If you have any questions, the city council or any of our city staff, this would be the time to ask if it's not on our agenda already.
May I?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, members of the council. My name is Michael Walsh, and I'm here today to try and find a solution for our problem. I'm speaking on behalf of this group that's here with me, right behind me, and we're basically displaced from the hurricanes last season, and we were all in RVs and campers and could not find a place because of all the places that were closed down to park our vehicles. So, we were able to find a vacant lot on 49th Street, 10793 49th Street. It's currently zoned M1 Hotel Motel. And the reason we're here tonight is because we've recently had a visit from code enforcement telling us that we have to go. We're very concerned, because we've been to the city and tried to find out what options might be available to either have the place rezoned, or get a temporary permit, or some other solution, because none of us want to be homeless again. So, we'd like to find out, is there a path to set a meeting with the appropriate people to see if we can find a good solution for everybody? And see if we can have code enforcement give us a little time, a little leeway until we find a solution for everybody, because the last thing we want is to go back on the street. So, I understand there's a limit on time that I can speak, so I don't want to take up any more time than we need to, but I would like to ask one or two of the group to come up and explain their situation, so you can understand what we've been through, and hopefully get some help to never have to go there again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name's Robert McMillan. I live in the park that he was referring to. As you can see, I'm not in the best of health. It was good to see everybody do those little meetings and yelling. I can see we've got some top-notch people here, and it's always been the case. I've been in the area, I was born in Florida, and I've been in the area off and on over 30 years. I've raised three adult children in the area with my ex-wife, and, you know, fully participated in them growing up in Pinellas Park. And it's been a really great place for them, and so far, it's been a really great place for me. I find myself in a bit of a quandary, because I really would be more than inconvenienced if I were forced to move. I live on a fixed income being disabled, and I spent five years not making a penny while I was waiting for that to go through. So, there are a lot of issues that just could open up where people have a place to go. No one wants to see the ad hoc camps of homeless people on the side of the road or in the parking lot of a business. I've been that guy, unfortunately. Once my disability went through, and we were going through park to park, you know, state parks are a really good place for a short period of time, but they find that there are limits unless you're signed on a lease in the state. You can only stay in a park for six months as a temporary. And during the winter, I know I don't need to tell you that I'm just priced right out of the market. However, we found this park. I have waterproof, airtight sewer connections. I have reliable electricity. I have clean water to drink and care for my pets, and I got Buddy back there, he's my adopted grandson, he's autistic, so he wanted to let you guys know how important it is to him. I'm going to try to be very brief, as I know that's important. But Buddy's very well taken care of, and it's much easier to do it where we are. People around us are people that we know. People around us are people that know him and are willing to help. I spent most of the last month in the hospital, so it's really, really important to me that I know my wife and my grandson are in safe hands in Pinellas Park while I'm trying to get better and rejoin them. I was in ICU a week ago, so I get a little bit brain fog from some of the things that they do to keep me around longer. We have a willing landlord. He's noticed things that I didn't know I had wrong in my camper, and he'll fix it. And I can pay off over time whatever it is that needs to get repaired. I'm sure certainly with the park, anything that's not compliant with code enforcement, he'd be willing to get on a path to make that happen. I am within minutes of any one of my doctors because of the location I'm in, and it gives us the opportunity to frequent local businesses such as the OCC, the Harley dealership sometimes has events, Buddy likes to go watch the professional wrestling there. We are a part of the community. I made a lot of money until I got sick, and it was hard to watch it all go away. But I know that Pinellas Park is the kind of place that can accommodate people who want to be people, I want to be compliant. I don't want to be the guy you have to chase out of Walmart. I want to pay my rent, and I want to live peacefully. I know I went over my time, so I do thank you guys for that, but it was very important to me. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council, for letting me come up and say a few things. My name is Andrea Gordon. I was displaced with the hurricane and living in an extended-stay efficiency. I ended up getting a job with a company called Pedal Valves, which I think you guys might be familiar with. We are a company who got a contract with Pinellas County and the City of Pinellas Park changing out the water meters. We get contracts all over the country. Not only have I found a job that I absolutely love and I'm great at, but working with the city and the utilities department, the foreman, has been amazing. But we ended up going and buying a 1999 camper, because we decided that when this project is over, which could be January, February time, we're going to move with the company. Something very hard to do, because we love the area. However, after we bought the camper, we realized that most parks won't take anything over 12 years old, even though it's in amazing condition. Plus, they want a year lease signed. I can't do that, considering that in Pinellas Park, and the job's going to be over between January and February, and I have no clue where the next project will be. It could be Clearwater, it could be Louisiana. Michael, he and this property have been a huge blessing. He not only worked with my family and I to make the move more affordable, but he understands the spot that we're in with employment. So, everything he's done, he's worked with us with not having to sign the year's lease. He didn't care the year of the camper. Everything on the property works perfectly, whatever hasn't. He's very fast and efficient with fixing an issue. I mean, the only thing that didn't work with us was the microwave, the camper's next door, and it ended up, my 21-year-old son now is in the camper, and we rented the RV next to it, so we could kind of start getting him on his own and kind of paying some of his own bills. So, Michael even worked with us with that for making that part affordable. If it wasn't for him and this property, I would have this fabulous job, I would be in this fabulous community, but we would be homeless with a camper. I am just asking that you kindly give him the opportunity to do what's needed to make this a residential legally livable property. There are just a few others that do live here, a few that are disabled. We're just trying to make it a not-live-illegally-moving-place-to-place-with-campers-or-RVs. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me and hear me out tonight, and again, it's just been a pleasure working with everybody here. He not only worked with my family and I to make the move more affordable, but he understands the spot that we're in with employment. So everything he's done, he's worked with us with not having to sign the year's lease. He didn't care the year of the camper. Everything on the property works perfectly, whatever hasn't. He's very fast and efficient with fixing an issue. I mean, the only thing that didn't work with us was the microwave, the camper's next door, and it ended up, my 21-year-old son now is in the camper, and we rented the RV next to it so we could kind of start getting him on his own and kind of paying some of his own bills. So Michael even worked with us with that for making that part affordable. If it wasn't for him and this property, I would have this fabulous job, I would be in this fabulous community, but we would be homeless with a camper. I am just asking that you kindly give him the opportunity to do what's needed to make this a residential legally livable property. There are just a few others that do live here, a few that are disabled. We're just trying to make it and not live illegally, moving place to place with campers or RVs. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me and hear me out tonight, and again, it's just been a pleasure working with everybody here.
Hello, my name is Cory, and I'm just here, basically. I lost everything I owned in the hurricanes to FEMA helped me purchase a camper, so now I own a camper. So if I had to move, I would have to find some place for that. I'm on disability. My large intestines don't work, so I'm on medication for that and can't work a full-time job, and anytime anything breaks, Michael's always fixed it. I haven't had any problems there. It's a nice community, so I'll keep it short.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Carrie. Just going to read you the letter I wrote to send with Michael in case we couldn't make it, only because my husband was in the hospital last week, and I was not sure if I could make it. As you know, this is my husband, Robert McMill. He is an ordained minister. My name is Carrie. We were so lucky to find where we are now. We lost our lot after, it was damaged along with our camper, which we were able to get We had to go to Cracker Barrel, and I was up till 4:00 AM, and I saw his ad, and I knew this was going to change everything for us if this was a real thing, and it turned out to be, and it's unofficially named after Buddy. We even have a sign inside there. He's very well careful there. I feel very safe there, and all of us are very close. We all do different things. We can all help each other. My car was dead the other day. Jim, he had cables. He helped me get it going and let me have the cables until I got back. We've had a problem with our AC. Another somebody helped us with that. We all just are very close-knit family and have become that way because of our situations and how much we can relate to each other. So thank you for your time, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hello. I get to do what I absolutely do not like doing, is speaking in public to other people. But long story short, yes, if we can have some time to get this worked out where things get fixed. I bought my RV. This is my first home I've had since 1995. Quite a drinking problem, and I decided a couple of years ago, get sober, and I have saved my money. This came down from up north, and the guy had it for sale, so it wasn't affected by the storm, paid cash for it, and it's the first time getting back to society. I own it now. I can't put it anywhere else because it's over 10 years old. Lot of support with my quit drinking and everything, trying to be a regular member of society. I even push the carts back at Walmart or wherever I'm at when I go, and it's just for my recovery and stuff. But seriously, I don't, my dad passed this year, so I have family and stuff out of state, and I'd be devastated if I had moved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes.
I believe that what you guys need to do is, no, is to work with the code enforcement group, and at the same time, the owner of the property, work with our building department, Nick, who went around that way, he's coming over here, work with him to go through the process of getting it zoned so that it can actually be used for that. Okay. You know, and that could have to do with the infrastructure, you know, being, you know, modified, things of that nature. So tomorrow during the day, have somebody call code enforcement, have somebody call Nick's team. He's got business cards for you guys, and try to work through the process. Make sure that you call code enforcement first to let them know that you're going to try to work through the process so that they have it on the records.
Fantastic.
Thank you, Mayor.
That's Nick over there.
That's Nick over there.
Nick, I just have to say you have the nicest smile of anybody I've ever seen. You've got a great smile.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody else would like to come up and speak on anything that is not on our agenda this evening? No? Before we move on, when I was talking about veterans, there is a gentleman in our audience who is a, is it, where were you? He's been a veteran, Vietnam? Is that correct, Mr. George?
Vietnam era.
Vietnam-era veteran. Comes to our council meetings every single time that we have a council meeting. So please give a big round of applause to Mr. George. He's a wonderful face out there in the audience that I love to be able to smile at, especially, you know, things are kind of, you know, it calms you down. We do have a few quasi judicial items this evening, so if you believe that you're going to speak on those items, please stand and be sworn in.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Thank you. Now moving on to Section 2, Approval of Minutes, Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, Mayor. Making a motion, we approve regular council minutes of October 9, 2025, as on file in the city clerk's office.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We're hitting the buttons for that part. There we go.
You asked.
And I'm going to show the audience out there. This is new. We're still learning how to use them properly.
Motion carries unanimously.
And as you can see, it lets the audience at home know what we voted, because a lot of times, we don't speak loud enough. Moving on to Section 3, Public Hearings, Item P1, Ordinance Number 2025-30.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Item Number P1, Ordinance Number 2025-30. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Pinellas Park, Pinellas County, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances by amending Chapter 18 Land Development Code pertaining to accessory use and supplementary district regulations, amending Section 18-1502.2 to conform the definition of public food service establishment with Section 509013 Florida statutes, amending Section 18-1530 to add a subsection 18-1530.31 pertaining to dogs in designated outdoor dining areas due to a Scribner's error in 2024 ordinances, amending the Land Development Code to establish an outdoor dog dining permit application fee in the city's administrative fee schedule, and providing for the inclusion of such amended ordinance in the Code of the City of Pinellas Park, Florida, providing for separability and providing for an effective date. This has been a second and final reading ordinance, number 2025-30, by title only, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Item P1, Ordinance Number 2025-30's, second public hearing and second reading. I am opening the public hearing and turning it over to Megan.
Good evening. My name's Megan Montesino, Development Review Manager, and I'll be presenting P1, Second Hearing. This is case LVC-0825-00015. The request is an ordinance to allow dogs within certain designated outdoor areas of public food service establishments. And the summary of the ordinance is a new subsection of Land Development Code titled Dogs in Designated Outdoor Dining Areas. Two new definitions, one for outdoor dining area and one for public food service establishment. All requirements of 509.233 Florida statutes include hand, or included, which include hand washing, cleaning, leashes, et cetera. And then permitted zoning districts are any zoning district that allows restaurants, taverns and lounges, breweries, microbreweries, microwineries, and/or microdistilleries. And I am here if you have any additional questions.
Thank you. City Council, have any questions of Megan?
No. No? Not a question.
Okay. Okay. You can turn off your light. I'll remember. Is there anybody in the audience that has any questions on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing at its second public hearing and second reading. And the entertained motion is by Councilwoman, Ms. Patty Reed.
Thank you. I'm making a motion that we pass, Ordinance Number 2025-30, second public hearing and second reading.
Second motion.
Motion has been made and seconded. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Moving on to Item P2, Ordinance Number 2025-31.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Item P2, Ordinance Number 2025-31. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Pinellas Park, Pinellas County, Florida, adopting revised master plan controlling development of a mixed-use planned unit development, MUPUD, with underlying mixed-use district, MXD zoning, on Phase 5 of a 1.37-acre parcel of land generally located south of 76th Avenue North, north of 75th Avenue North, east of 58th Street North, and west of 57th Street North, and more particularly described in Exhibit A, which is attached hereto and made a part hereof, for the reconfiguration of the parcels within Phase 5 of the planned unit development, PUD boundary, certifying consistency with the city's adopted comprehensive plan, providing for repeal of ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, to the extent of such conflict, providing for an effective date. This is public hearing and a second and final reading of Ordinance Number 2025-31 in these quasi judicial proceedings.
Thank you. Item P2, Ordinance Number 2025-31's, public hearing, second and final reading. I am opening the public hearing and turning it over to Megan.
Good evening again. My name is Megan Montesino, Development Review Manager, and I'll be presenting P2, which is PUD-0625-0004. The request is a major PUD amendment to change the layout of the four two-story, single-family attached units for Phase 5 of Artistry at Park Station. Shown here, outlined in red, is Phase 5 Artistry of Park Station. The subject property is generally located south of 76th Avenue, north of 75th Avenue, east of 58th Street, and west of 57th Street. Shown here is the land use, which is Community Redevelopment District, CRD. Zoning is mixed-use district, MXD, with a mixed-use planned unit development overlay. The flood zone is X, which is a low-risk flood zone. Shown here is the approved master plan. As you can see, outlined in red, is four single-family attached units, also known as townhomes, with parking to the north and to the south. And shown here is the proposed master plan. Four units, they are larger. Shown here is a close-up of proposed Phase 5 site plan. Outlined in purple is the driveway/garage entrances, which are two-car garages for each unit, and then outlined in green to the east and to the west are the front doors for each Shown here is some building elevations. This is what the north and south elevations will look like with the garage entrances. And this is the east and west elevations of the front of the units. A little bit of history, back in 2020, the original Artistry Mixed Use PUD, MUPUD master plan was approved with 22 detached, single-family homes, five live-work units, two existing buildings, and one proposed art building. And in 2023, the PUD was amended to change the proposed art building into a live-work unit and at Phase 5 for four three-story live-work units with commercial on the first floor and residential units on the second and third floor. In 2024, the PUD was amended again to change the proposed use of Phase 5 to four two-story, single-family attached units. The current amended MUPUD is approved with the following: 22 detached, single-family homes, four attached, single-family homes, six live-work units, and two existing buildings. Just to clarify, the current request does not change any of the information above. Again, the request is to change the layout of the four two-story, single-family attached units, reconfigure the lot lines, and provide two-car garages. Per Section 18-1529.12, before, this type of change requires a major PUD amendment since the proposal includes the rearrangement of any lot, block, building tract, or common open space as shown on the adopted master plan. The proposed development will meet the approved setbacks approved in the MUPUD, and two off-street spaces per unit are provided via the proposed two-car garages. Findings are, the requested amendment is consistent with the intent of the Land Development Code and approved MUPUD, and the requested amendment is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the adopted comprehensive plan. If approved, staff recommends the following condition: Parking for each of the four single-family attached units shall be within each unit's garage. This shall be written into the HOA recorded covenants, conditions, and restrictions and enforced by the HOA. On September 9, planning and zoning recommended approval of this case with the same condition. And I am here as well as the applicant if you have any questions.
City Council, have any questions for Megan? Seeing none. Does the applicant like to come up and speak and reiterate or add any additional information that Megan may have?
Thank you. Lovely presentation.
Name and address, and you did get sworn in.
Glenn Larkin, representing Nomad State Homes, 4003rd Street North, St. Petersburg, and I have these one. So this, as you can see, has been a long process, and changing these things is all about trying to make it financially viable. And we are, believe we have now a product that we can actually build for the price that it's going to cost to build it. Is missing middle housing, which everybody wants these days, and I hope that you will support our application.
City Council, have any questions for? Yep. Is there anybody in the audience that has any questions for either the applicant or city staff? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion by Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, Mayor. Making a motion, we pass, Ordinance Number 2025-31, public hearing, second and final reading.
Motion has been made in seconds. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate it.
Moving on to Item P3, Ordinance Number 2025-32.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Item P3, Ordinance Number 2025-32. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Pinellas Park, Pinellas County, Florida, accepting and approving a voluntary petition for annexation, annexing into the city a certain contiguous parcel of land generally located at 7201 79th Street North, together with the adjacent right-of-way of 79th Street North, 72nd Avenue North, and legally described and depicted in Exhibit A, which is attached hereto and made a part hereof, providing for amendment of the legal description of the corporate boundaries of the city, providing for the assignment of city zoning classification, providing for repeal of ordinances or parts of ordinances herewith, conflicting herewith to the extent of such conflict, and providing for an effective date. This is a second and final reading of Ordinance Number 2025-32 by title only.
Thank you. Item P3, Ordinance Number 2025-32's, public hearing, second and final reading. I am opening the public hearing and turning it over to Ms. Danielle.
Thank you, Mayor Bradbury. Good evening, Councilmembers. My name is Danielle Stewart, and I'm the Long Range Planning Manager, and I'll be presenting Items P3 and P4 together in association with the annexation of a property located at 7201 79th Street North. So Item P3 before you today is for the annexation of the parcel, and P4 is a land use plan amendment redesignating the parcel as residential low-medium for that property. So here is an aerial map of that property. As you can see, it is located just north of, I think it's 72nd Avenue. On the next slide, as you can see, this is the countywide plan map as brought forth by Ford Pinellas. The subject property is currently designated as residential urban in the county, and the request under P4 is to redesignate the parcel, consistent with this plan as residential low-medium upon annexation. Here's the zoning for the property. The property is currently zoned as R3 in the county, but upon annexation, it will be designated a single-family residential R1, which is consistent with the other annexed properties in that neighborhood. in that neighborhood. Here is a photo of the flood insurance rate map. The property is located in flood zone AE, which is a high-risk flood zone, but pretty much what that means is that it would require a federally-backed flood insurance if the property owner had a mortgage. Then here is a site photo. As you can see, there's an existing, single-family home on that site. And our findings are as follows: The subject property is contiguous to the city and meets all of the annexation requirements as set forth in Florida statutes. The RLM future land use designation and R1 zoning designation have been determined to be the most appropriate for the property, and the request is consistent with both the LDC as well as our adopted comprehensive plan. On September 4th, Planning and Zoning Commission only heard item P four and recommended approval of the LUPA dash zero six two five dash zero 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 five, with the condition that the annexation ordinance, item P three, is approved by council. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
City Council have any questions for Danielle? Seeing none. Do you have questions for Ms. Danielle?
No, ma'am.
No, okay. You want to be in the queue. Is there anybody in the audience that has any questions on this item, either for city staff or city council? Seeing none. I will close the public hearing at its second and final reading and entertain a motion by Councilmember Seville.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we pass ordinance number 2025-32, public hearing, second and final hearing.
Motion has been made and seconded.
Motion carries unanimously.
I was pushing it and it didn't light up, so.
Just for clarity in the record, the mayor's vote was?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item P four, ordinance number 2025-33.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is item P five, which is, sorry, P four. My screen jumped. Ordinance number P four, ordinance number 2025-33. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Pinellas Park, Pinellas County, Florida, amending the city's official land use plan map by providing the land use designation of residential low-medium, RLM, for certain lands generally located at 7201 79th Street North, and more particularly described in Exhibit A, which is attached here to and made a part hereof, certifying consistency with the city's adopted comprehensive plan, providing for repeal of ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith to the extent of such conflict, and providing for an effective date. This has been a second and final reading of ordinance number 2025-33 by title only.
Thank you. Item P four, ordinance number 2025-33's, public hearing, second and final reading. I am opening the public hearing and turning it over to Danielle, in case there's any additional information. It's a companion piece to item P three.
Thank you, Mayor Bradbury. I'd like to enter into the record the presentation for the previous item, for this item.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the audience that has any questions on item P four? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion by Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, Mayor. Make a motion we pass, ordinance number 2025-33, public hearing, second and final reading.
Motion has been made and seconded. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Moving on to item P five, request for landscape waiver.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is item P five. This is a request for a landscape waiver to the requirement that prohibited tree species, Brazilian pepper tree, be removed at 6901 Park Boulevard. This is a quasi judicial hearing on first and final reading, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Item P five's request for landscape waivers, public hearing, first and final reading. It is quasi judicial. I am opening the public hearing and turning it over to Mr. Todd.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Todd Byron. I'm a senior planner here with the city, and I will be presenting item P five, which is a landscape waiver request to the requirement that prohibited tree species be removed during development. Here is an aerial of the property. The subject site is located at 6901 Park Boulevard. The land use is designated as commercial general, CG. The zoning category is listed as CH heavy commercial, and the subject site is located entirely within the X shaded and AE10 flood zones. And then here I have a few pictures of the subject area that is the reason for the request today. I can see it kind of right in the center there, the overgrowth of Brazilian pepper trees. And same spots, just a different angle. So a quick summary, the applicant is requesting approval for a waiver to the requirement that prohibited tree species be removed during development. Per section 18-1533.10c, prohibited trees, such as Brazilian peppers, shall be removed prior to inspection. However, applicants may request waivers to the requirements of the landscape regulations in accordance with section 18-1533.22. The applicant has noted that the area is difficult to access, especially for the equipment necessary for the tree removal. Were it not for the site configuration, the removal of the prohibited trees would be a little bit more feasible. Here's a proposed site plan. The area in question, again, is the, in the top right, that little triangle there. And then now we're going to go over the landscape waiver criteria. So number one, the purpose of the requirement, whether the purpose of the requirement is otherwise fully achieved, or more important purposes of the ordinance, the comprehensive plan, or the community redevelopment plan, will be served thereby, or the requirement serves no valid public purpose in particular case. So the purpose of the requirement to remove prohibited trees, species, is not otherwise achieved, and the requirement does serve a valid public purpose. Number two, public interest in adjacent properties, whether the waiver will create an adverse impact on the public interest or on the adjacent property, and whether all necessary alternative measures shall be taken by the applicant to prevent such impact. Brazilian peppers spread aggressively through their various roots, which may affect surrounding properties. The applicant has not proposed measures to prevent this impact. And number three, property size, configuration, and natural features, whether the size, configuration, and/or natural features of the property involve presenting hardship on the development of the property. As I mentioned previously, the applicant has stated that the area is difficult to access due to the site configuration. Number four, surrounding property, the site, the size, character, configuration, zoning, natural features of and use of the surrounding property. Again, like Brazilian peppers spread aggressively through their various roots, which may affect the surrounding properties that can prevent other trees and plants from growing. And number five, hardship, whether the need for the waiver is a result of a self-imposed hardship. And then finally, our findings. The proposed use is consistent with the purpose and intent of the heavy commercial CH zoning district. The requested landscape waiver could cause adverse impacts on the neighboring properties in the future if invasive tree species are not maintained. The request does not meet all the criteria for a landscape waiver per section 18-1533.22b. And finally, the request is generally inconsistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the adopted comprehensive plan and the regulations of the Land Development Code. And I'm here if you have any questions, as well as the applicant with the presentation.
Does City Council have any questions of Mr. Todd? Councilmember Seville?
Yes. Todd, there's some questions.
Their access is off of Park Boulevard, about right here. Regarding the maintenance of the area, I'm not entirely sure where they access that problem.
I'm not sure where it is either. Those are the storage units to the west, correct?
Correct.
That is the parcel that that triangle goes to, is that the storage unit?
Yeah. There is, okay.
I have a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
When construction or remodeling is done, do the original plans or the new plans get labeling, letting them know that if there's invasive species, they have to be removed?
Yeah, typically, there's like demolition plans or something like that that will show anything that's being removed, whether it's structures or even landscaping. So if there are any invasive species that are found during any inspections, they're always requested to be removed and shown on the plan as well.
And Brazilian pepper trees, they're invasive, they can spread to other neighbors.
Exactly, yeah. And especially in this case, there's a couple of single-family homes directly to the north, which is slightly a cause for concern.
And they do have access to the Brazilian pepper trees via the fence that says no trespassing on it, correct?
I believe so. There is a chain link fence that surrounds the area, so.
Thank you. Any other questions of City Council? Councilwoman Reed?
Is there a fence under all that?
Somewhere in there, there is a chain link fence.
There's a chain link fence.
And the next presentation does show some images of the chain link fence and the applicant's presentation.
Okay. Thank you. Is the applicant here? This is quasi judicial, so name and address for the record of whether you were sworn in
Evening. My name is Salvatore Palas, and I have been sworn in. I represent the engineering firm that designed the site permit for it. I'm not the current engineer, record. I am having to cover for him due to a last announcement about the hearing still being active for today. There was conflict with everyone else involved. But I'll be here to be able to speak and represent based upon the engineer, as well as the applicant that owns the property.
The presentation's not up. Have it up in one second.
Okay.
Yeah.
Software.
That's okay. Or actually, you know. They do have the PDFs up, so I guess we can work with those. There was a presentation, but.
That's okay, though. We can make it work.
And I can scroll back and forth for you. Sorry.
Thank you. Is this the existing conditions?
Yep, this is the site plans.
Thank you again, everyone. This project was annexed into the city back in 2020. The current, at the time, the use was a warehouse project. Afterwards, what was done was the project requested to add an additional storage unit on the property. Additional stormwater management to comply with the current codes was imposed on the property. And yes, there was a note on the plan that said invasive species would be removed, though at the civil level, means and methods are not defined how to access that property. We were going to, once we brought the contractor onboard, they were looking to see how to access the property itself or that section to the northeast corner of the property. After visualizing or getting to the site, getting the contractor involved, what is surrounding this triangle wedge of the property is a 20-foot-wide, eight-foot-deep concrete canal. So any skid steer, front-end loader, backhoe, and dump truck to get all that material off is inaccessible. There's no practical way without a very large-capacity stormwater pipe filling to provide a culvert across this large ditch, or a bridge constructed over it, which could possibly damage the concrete lining of the ditch. So when we went back and forth and discussed that, the only other discussion was accessing from the north. And as Todd had mentioned, the couple of residential properties to the north, when I visited the site earlier before this meeting, contacted some of the residents to see couldn't even be accessed through their property, and only one lot line allowed anybody to be able to cross through their property, through their backyard to get to it. But due to structures and other material back in their yard, there's no easy way to access even through the residential property if they would even grant access across their property to the cleared land. I can say for what I did be able to speak with, one of the owners that was there at the time, he said, I don't mind the vegetation being there. He was more looking for the natural trees. He didn't like the invasive aspect of it, but it wasn't encroaching beyond the property line of the developer. The one concern he did have, which was in the presentation of homeless in the area, there wasn't any found homeless on the developer's side of the warehouse wedge, but on the north side of the warehouse, directly north of it, he had mentioned that there was prior homeless there, but after that was cleared, the homeless in the area seemed to have been removed. So the point again for why we're here is, the only request is because of the impracticality to get to the east side of this ditch, the request to not have to, at this time, remove the invasive species in that landscaped area. Currently, still keep it undeveloped, still use the natural vegetation as a part of the type C buffer to provide a buffer from the residential units or homes on the north side of the complex. And even to enhance it, we're proposing to put a six-foot-tall PVC fence along the warehouse side of the ditch, further providing the buffering between the uses. If you don't mind, Todd, you can go to the presentation. This is just to give the general idea. So as mentioned, we have a 20-foot-wide, concrete-lined ditch, eight-foot-deep, to the west of the triangle wedge and to the south of the triangle wedge, with the only accessible portion being, as mentioned, there is a chain link fence along the warehouse that I mentioned a moment ago. We would replace with a PVC fence to provide a more opacity buffer between the uses and clean up the chain link fence versus the PVC fence. And even if we did access through the fence, we still have to leap over this 20-foot-wide canal to get to the other side. There's no easy way to get to it. The next section had the photos that Todd was mentioning earlier. Here's the concrete-lined ditch. There is chain link fence along the warehouse side of the ditch. There is some overreach of vegetation over the canal that you can, unique conditions here, again, 20-foot-wide ditch, eight-foot-deep concrete. The invasive species that we're trying to remove, that we're requesting the waiver on is just on the other side of the canal, where we would remove anything along the canal edge or along the side with the warehouse. It's just impractical to get to the other side we're requesting the waiver from. And there is no safe access to it, possibly from the property developed, from the developer's property across the city's easement to get to the other side of the ditch.
Sir, for your knowledge while you're scrolling, the council does have hard copies of this in front of them as well, in terms of visibility.
All right, thanks very much. The hardship here is enforcing the strict requirement. In this particular application, because of any accessibility to get to it, there's no safe way to get across the swell without building this large bridge and getting people to walk across the ditch to do the clearing and then get the material back across is not safe. The attempted removal would damage, could possibly damage, the city's facility by putting something on or over this concrete-lined ditch, and/or the cost to have to build something across that, being impractical to have to, it seemed a hardship on the developer. And obviously, the land that's cutting the separation between the triangle wedge and the warehouse is an undeveloped, or is a city-maintained easement ditch. And you can see here, there's some overgrowth in the ditch lining that we would have to clear out with the permit request, and there's no trespassing fence lines across the ditch itself. I don't remember why there is a fence there, but basically along the north proper line, the chain link fence crosses the ditch, and the water from the north crosses through this chain link fence through the warehouse property. As a good faith effort to comply with the code, what the developer would like to do is remove all invasive species along the west side of the ditch, whatever we can reach along the overgrowth of the ditch to provide a clear path of flow through the ditch for the city, so there's not obstruction from that standpoint, and provide, to enhance the buffering opacity, a six-foot-tall PVC fence along the west side of ditch, replacing the current chain link fence with the PVC fence. And because of the current vegetation in there is acting as a part of the type C buffer between the residential property and the warehouse, if any future, which was mentioned in the staff report, there was discussion earlier on about including and expanding the easement to provide that being for additional maintenance from the city and stormwater management there, any removal of the invasive plus the tree theirs would possibly reduce the buffering between the residential properties and the warehouse properties. And obviously, we will comply to remove everything within the applicable areas along that ditch. Anything we can't reach, we will trim along the eastern edge and remove from the flow through the ditch. And overall, the granting of this variance would be no hardship to the public. And overall, the granting of this variance would be no hardship to the public. The limitations of this ditch currently wedge any invasive species on this triangle property. There is no way for the invasive species, Brazilian peppers, to cross this concrete canal besides just reaching over. It's not going to expand its roots over to the other side. The residential property to the north that I mentioned earlier didn't appear to be expanding anything onto their property, whether it's maintained or dying along their edge. I hadn't seen it, and the resident I spoke with didn't show anything encroaching onto their property at this time. The drainage facility will be undisturbed and continue to function with this variance after we clear it. And the natural vegetation will be, provide that screening buffer between the residential and the warehouse properties. The fence, again, will be providing maintenance and providing further opacity. The hardship, I'll repeat myself again, is the hardship to have to go across this ditch. It's not an easy way to get across. If it was an easy, we probably wouldn't even have this discussion. The removals are practical, unsafe for outside the applicant's control to get across the county's, other city's ditch. The limitation is based upon not, nothing recreated. The city ditch was there. There's no way to get across that at this time. The only thing we're requesting an exemption from is just the parts on the east side by the triangle wedge. And overall, anything within the waiver that's approved at this time, as mentioned in the staff report, is valid for only one year. We're currently trying to get a CIO on the building that's basically done. We're trying to finish a final certification. So anything after this one-year time that comes back for future development or any other code enforcement would still be available within a year's time to bring up for discussion back with the city. And other than that, most of the sub I would be repeating myself about a third or fourth time, or what Todd had already mentioned. Any questions the city might have?
Councilwoman Reed?
Clarify for my looking at all this. So on that map, so that's like, the ditch is coming through there.
Exactly where your hand is.
So that's the concrete ditch. And is there one here also?
Yes, ma'am. There are currently two ditches that basically flank on the west side and southeast corner of this triangle wedge. The whole, the wedge is, I'll go-
And is it a grass? No, it's good. So you're, so, so the, right there. So that whole corner is surrounded on two sides by a concrete ditch?
Yes. The current ditch goes north between the triangle wedge and the warehouse, right where Todd's cursor is going, goes to the north further. I forget which street goes to north, but it continues on to the north. The city has diagonal, another concrete ditch that this dumps into and cuts across the property. So there is two concrete-lined ditches running to the south and west side of this triangle wedge.
And so, so you're saying that ditch is our ditch?
The, is an easement going through the north one? I forget if the, I'm assuming the one, I have no memory, but I believe the one going diagonals also. I know the north-south one is cities.
And then the triangle with all the Brazilian pepper on it is your property?
It's still part-
So your property got split with our ditch?
It's just an easement.
Just an easement. But it's a concrete ditch?
Concrete line ditch.
On both sides?
I have a question. So you don't know if you're an arborist or not, or if you have the knowledge. Do Brazilian pepper trees have seeds?
I'm-
Yes.
Of my green fingers, ma'am. I do not know.
The answer is yes. So anytime they fall into the water, they travel to go elsewhere. And then another person might have to deal with the Brazilian pepper trees that are on this property ending up growing on their property. Down channel.
Down channel, down-
Or up channel if there's flooding, what have you.
Well, they, it could theoretically go downstream, but most of this is going to wash out to the Gulf.
And on the same map that she's showing, on here, it tells them to remove the Brazilian pepper trees, any invasive species, at the time of the original construction. And it also tells on here what plants are there. It's not completely covered like it is now from the survey, the original survey, when they started to remodel and redo the construction.
Well, the survey only picked up the trees over a certain diameter. The Brazilian peppers would have been picked up.
Yes, I'm aware. But it does notate that they need to remove invasive species.
Comply with the city code, the government code. That's what was required. And that's at the time what we put on the plans. Though, as mentioned, when we went further into means and methods discussion with the contractor, that's why we came to the city requesting the variance, when we realized it wasn't easy to get access to that area.
So my, my question back, I would still, in that, what they're trying to figure out is I think we have to figure out if that is truly our ditch. The other one I know is water management or-
The one that goes at an angle, belongs to the water management district.
But the one that's there, I mean, that's an important, that's like an important part of this, is if that is our ditch, I would feel, if they can't get into it, and it's all overgrown. Isn't that an important part of this before we, if that's our concrete ditch, that's, if that's the one they're showing that's completely clogged with soil? No?
The whole thing's important, yeah.
You know what I mean.
So I would just add for the record, this project did go before Randy Roberts over at the Water Management District, and he didn't object to the request. So-
Yeah, but it's still, if it's a Brazilian pepper haven, then something needs to happen to it, in my opinion.
Yeah, we shouldn't do it ourselves. The city shouldn't be responsible.
Well-
I'll let somebody else.
I, I am- Councilmember Seville.
Sorry, sorry.
And seeing the ditch that's running directly north and south to determine if it is concrete, because I can't see that being concrete.
Yeah, I have not gone out to see the ditch myself.
The, some of the photos we have, we can see the connection point where the diagonal ditch meets the north-south ditch. The southern tip is clearly cleared and shows concrete. When I walked it, there was too much overgrowth over the rest of it as it progressed to the north. That's the wedge right there where the north-south ditch meets the diagonal ditch. And you can see that part's clearly concrete-lined, if the diagonal, and the north part passed that overgrowth. When I had walked it, there was too much stuff over the embankment growing and debris, leaves and stuff. I couldn't clearly see, but the fact that it was very rigid edge, it looked like it was a man-made embankment, not just a grass ditch. It would have been more-
And I could see where it, where it 45 is off of the big canal. I could see that, that cutoff being concrete, but I can't see any of it being north of there being a concrete ditch.
I don't believe we have a photo that can clean to depict it. My only thing I can explain to you is when I went out there earlier today, it looked like it was a man-made slope. From knowing many ditches from my past work and current work, anything of that buildup would have had shown signs of erosion. It looked too straight edged to be anything that wasn't a rigid surface, whether it was lined of some kind of-
If I could just a minute, excuse me for interrupting you, but it certainly is fine for staff to be talking among themselves at this time. But I would suggest that any councilperson, if you have any questions of the staff, that you wait until this gentleman's finished and then ask him on the record.
Yes. Otherwise, the city clerk's going to have a hard time translating everything tomorrow.
And also, the law is pretty clear that when there is a quasi judicial proceeding, that there's not supposed to be discussion between councilpeople that the public and the applicant can't hear and participate in. So just to make a better record, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Does City Council have any additional questions? Is there anybody in the audience that has any questions on this item for either the applicant or City Council or staff? Seeing none, I will, Councilmember Butler, we're going to do the, okay.
I'm sorry, there's a Brazilian pepper tree and has to go. That's it. It's so simple.
I'm going to have one of the clerks come and get your name and address for the record. Okay? She's a little, needs a little walking assistance, so, just so that we have it on the record and it's legitimate. I am, yeah. This is public hearing, first and final reading, quasi judicial. I'm closing the public hearing and entertain a motion by Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, ma'am. Make a motion. We approve WAV-0825-0023. Public hearing, first and final reading.
And I believe for the record, we should probably either do a roll call vote.
Some motion to approve on the floor.
A move. Do we have a second for the motion to approve? Councilmember Seville.
On it? Is that okay, Jim?
We've closed the public hearing, so I don't believe so.
I heard a motion. I didn't hear a second yet.
No.
I can withdraw. Can I withdraw? I withdraw my motion.
Every second, we can discuss it, yes.
What you can, but I think Councilmember Butler just withdrew his motion, so it could be further discussion of public hearing. It's been closed, but certainly you all can discuss it.
We're good. He was true.
He was true.
Okay. Any further discussion by City Council?
I just have a question, because in the backup, we talked about, in the backup, it's discussed that this is part of a future potential CIP project with the drainage that could address this problem. So I just wanted to clarify that because, I mean, there's like no way to get to it. So unless we're going to get the Department of War to do a drone strike on this patch that nobody can access, and we already have a CIP project potential work, we can address it. I just don't, just doesn't make sense to try to enforce this, to me personally.
So the property, the two ditches are Pinellas Park Water Management District. We do, you know, eventually, there will be a dredging project in here. We don't know. We don't have a CIP project on paper for this. I think the issue would be then the city has to clean this up, is the concern we have, as far as staff goes. But as far as we are right now, we do not have a project for this.
And I believe that there is, the way that that's angled right now, it's not facing right. Did you see all the green grasses right there?
I do.
They could get an easement or permission from the owner of that property to get to it from that direction instead of the other two ditches. It's just that photo is not north-southeast-west accurate.
But I think they still have to cross the ditch.
It's, that, that area there is not completely a concrete ditch. The concrete only goes so far. So there is access to it. It's more difficult. They won't be able to put a big, huge truck back there to get to it, but they can get back there and get to it. And I, I think that all of the homeowners-
Forest cutter.
-that live in Florida know how invasive Brazilian pepper trees are. And they know, I, I, he said that the neighbor doesn't have any. I am completely surprised. If he literally abuts back to that corner, I, if he doesn't have them, it's because he's been cutting them down every time you turn around and pulling them out by the roots. That's the only reason why he doesn't have them in his backyard, because those things are massive invasive. And I know on plans in general, they always have to have a note on there that says, "Please remove any invasive species." When a plan gets turned over to Nick and his team, it has to have that on there. So not only here, the surveyors all along the route with the remodel, with the original building, that little ticker, invasive species, has been on plans, civil site plans for 20, 30 years. So there's no excuse. Councilwoman Reed?
Can I ask you another question?
No. You can ask staff.
Staff, whoever would like to answer this one. Is it concrete? Is it solid concrete the whole thing? Or is it where she's saying that part of it is?
Yeah, a portion of it. Not the entire thing, though, I don't believe. The north-south portion of it.
Is dirt.
Mayor, let me suggest that if there's going to be questions, additional questions of council to either staff or this gentleman, that you reopen the public hearing for that, so that if there are questions of staff, the applicant can have the right to rebut that. So if, if the public hearing is, if there's going to be more questions, I think the public hearing should be reopened for that if it's allowed by the council.
Okay. Pleasure of City Council. I am opening the public, reopening the public hearing at its first and final reading. It is still quasi judicial. And do you want to answer that, or do we need to allow the applicant, well, the applicant can rebut if he feels like he needs to. Go ahead.
I'll let the applicant explain if he has better knowledge.
I am still Salvatore Palas. I'm still sworn in. To answer your question, as mentioned earlier, other than the visual confirmation of it being concrete-lined, it's concrete-lined to a point of the overgrowth. Without getting out there, I couldn't clearly see there's concrete north of that segment. It just appeared to have some type of rigid edge formation along the top embankment of where the fence is and then diagonally down. It didn't appear to be a long-term city, county, any maintained ditch that I'm aware of that would have held that rigid edge. Most of them had shown signs of erosion or depression area. There was a very rigid embankment. I can confirm it's concrete. It appears to be something that's lying there. And the comment of, could it be accessed from the north? Yes. But now, if no property owner in the north would allow us access to it, what do we do then?
Did you talk to the people to the north?
I had spoken to the, if you can go, Todd, to the picture that had the-
You spoke to the homeowner. You didn't speak to the one that has the retention pond right next to you, right? Is that correct?
The retention pond?
Yes.
I don't remember which, the north property, which is a cleared area. It didn't appear to be a pond on there that I can see.
Yeah, well, can Todd bring that other one up when he's done?
The, the north property, that particular one, no. That's where, what I had mentioned was the residence adjacent to the triangle wedge along that north corner there. Of those homeowners that were right abutting to it, if you can move your cursor up to the northwest a little bit further, Todd, where that clear grass area, those to the left, across the ditch. I'll just go stand up here.
All right. Right here is where I had gone out to the site, which seemed to be most applicable access to this ditch. The person who lived here did not answer the door, didn't have anyone there, and didn't want to see a creepy guy knock on the door in the middle of the evening. Nice gentleman over here, though, he was in the backyard, had taken a second to talk to me, and I spoke with him. He's the one that's a little off the edge of that property, that had mentioned to me the, he wanted to see the vegetation there, didn't like necessarily the Brazilian peppers, but didn't want to see the site cleared and all the trees and vegetation removed. And as I mentioned earlier, the property that's abutting to it has a bunch of development along there, sheds and material in their backyard. Any equipment going through there, we'd have to clear it. I don't know if you guys have seen most people building pools in backyards. You're going to put a skid steer running through that yard, it's going to tear it up, and it'll tear up for a whole week worth of clearing. I know personally, I wouldn't want someone going in my backyard. I'd say they couldn't agree to it. I just don't think we would get them to agree to it.
Yes, other than, I did ask, did you talk to the people that own where the grass is?
With that pond?
Yeah.
I had not seen them, got them mainly because of the access to it still.
That's all I needed to know. Go ahead, Councilmember Seville.
Yes. All the way through the center of Farrelawn, running north and south, that ditch is open, if I'm correct.
Correct me if I'm wrong.
You're correct.
And we mainly have probably 24-inch culvert running across the streets. The ditch does get a little bit deeper as it comes south, but I can't see, there's no, if you have access along that, just to the east of the storage units, to get onto that property with, I don't care if you use a payload or backhoe, forest, those forest cutters, they go in there and just grind it all up. I think you could put a piece of culvert in there during the construction, dump 10 yards of, 10 yards of dirt on it, compact it, and that's your access to clean that piece of property. I don't, that, because if you'll go up there and point, you can see where that ditch to the north is just dirt. And I, I can, I do not believe there is any way that that ditch running north, other than the way that the 45 is off, is concrete.
Further, beyond the warehouse property, I could visually see there was a ditch there, but I did not confirm that portion, if it was lined or not. I disagree that it's possible-
Because it's too overgrown, I think, is the purpose, the reason for it.
And any culvert, we would have to get a permit from the district. And that's where, as I mentioned, that 20-foot-wide current ditch, eight-foot-deep, we would need to maintain that capacity, and it would need a very large-
and it would need a very large pipe to meet that. So, going back to the request of it being an impractical request to have to temporarily put this very large pipe in the ditch.
Yeah, but it, I don't believe you'd have to put that larger pipe in if you put it in that ditch that's running north and south.
North of it, it's the same 20-foot wide along the property, if we go north of the property by where the pond parcel is to the north, we would have to fill the ditch, because the east side is residential to get across to the triangle.
Yeah, and I do believe you could put in a temporary culvert in there, fill it in, do the work, clean it back up. It's my thought. Because sooner or later, the city's going to come in there with a CIP and come down through the center of the whole Fair Lawn subdivision and connect to the water management ditch. So, I could see us spending a lot more money coming in there during construction to clear what we need to work. So, my favorite is for y'all to do it.
And the, the clearing part of it, depending on where, where we're at with the clearing, as of this time, there's nothing against us saying we can clear the west side of the ditch, clear the overpass of the ditch, and clean as much we can along the east side of the ditch. It's the request to go across the ditch and clear the entire property, per the stipulation for the LDC that requires the entire land to be cleared.
Right.
So, depending on which, whether it's going to be a city expense or the developer's expense, the section that's in the easement along the ditch, we can certainly clear that way through to provide capacity and allow for the conveyance of water through it. It's the, just disagreement on the practicality of getting that culvert to the other side and clearing the entire land of the invasive species.
Yeah, I, I don't think it, I don't think it'd be that difficult to do that myself. It's my opinion. The whole property can be cleared off.
Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, Mayor. So, both of those ditches are water management?
No.
No, just the, just the culverted, the one that's completely culverted all the way through?
The one that's concrete.
Concrete.
A portion of the, the concrete that goes east is water management district, then it turns into the city.
It did like this.
It's almost like an intersection of the road.
Right, but the one that turns into, that turns into dirt is ours?
Yes.
Okay, and we allow people to just drop a culvert in there and go over it without further discussion?
With a permit.
With a permit? And that's something we can do?
Yeah.
Especially during the dry season, that's much easier.
Councilmember Seville, did you still have additional questions?
No, that was all.
Okay. You're lit up, that's the reason why I was asking.
It's because this light don't work to indicate.
Any additional information, rebuttals, or anything else between the applicant and staff? Any additional questions between council and the applicant or staff? I'm going to, once again, close the public hearing at its first and final reading, and entertain a motion by City Council. Councilmember Seville.
Yes, may I like to make the motion to deny WAV 0825-00023, public hearing first and final reading.
Do I have a second?
Mayor, the motion dies for lack of a second. Procedurally, ultimately, that's your call as the presiding officer.
Is there any additional?
Should, should we just table it until we can get our, get it together on this? Is that?
Sounds like what we need to do, possibly, if somebody wants to make a motion for that.
Before you proceed to such motion, understand that this is a quasi judicial hearing initiated by the applicant. You would need the applicant's consent ostensibly to proceed in that fashion, as it is their relief to pursue, and if they wish to see that seen to conclusion tonight, that they, they have that ability, you, you can certainly inquire of the applicant if they're inclined to do so. If you were to do so, I'd be clear as to what you'd be waiting for to happen at a subsequent hearing.
Well, and also, if you do table it, none of the council would be able to talk to the staff or the applicant, or ask any questions, or do any further research on your own during that period. So, when Councilman Butler said, so we can get it together, I'm not sure what you meant by that, but you, you can't do any more investigation, everything needs to be.
Understood, I mean, I just, there's a lot of talking going on back and forth, trying to figure out whose is what. I just don't think that that's, I just, what I read in the backup, and there was talk of, you know, future projects between all this, trying to figure out whose ditch it is on the fly, I'm just not real comfortable making that decision, personally. That's just me.
With the applicant's consent, you could move the table and ask your staff to come up with some more answers at the rescheduled public hearing on this.
So, do we make a motion for that, if I want to make them, like, so that we could, or can he do? How do we do this to where, I just would like to see some, some more of our information and that of all these questions that came up and.
Let me ask the applicant, if you don't mind. You've kind of heard what's going on, do you have any objection, or would you consent to the council tabling it until their staff can answer some of these questions that council people have had tonight?
We can certainly discuss the, the legality of who owns the ditch, we can talk about the discussion of whether it's lined or not, and that can be proven, things we can decide upon either right after this meeting or by the next hearing if we do get tabled. The, the only practicality would be, the end result is if the culvert is the approach, we're going to discuss getting access to the adjacent property, whether it's denied or agreed upon. It's the, the discussion of what size pipe is practical enough, or at least not at undue hardship to access this east property. That's, that's the only thing that would be coming up as a, obviously, we would table this to a later date, whichever the next available hearing would be. A city permit is still waiting for CO on the already completed structure, now we're punting it out possibly a month or two, and it's holding up the developer's ability to use the facility. So, I have to say, we couldn't table it, but anything we do resolve at this time to table is whether it's the ditch is city or not, and it seems to be it's the city's ditch, whether it's lined or not, and what we can do in there, that could be a quick answer. And how do we decide, or at least the city decide on if culverting and how many, the capacity issue of this, whether it's a dry season or not, we still have to be.
It's not exactly your time to continue arguing for that, the question was, do you have any objections if the council would table this for a later time? And obviously, you'd have the opportunity to bring in any additional evidence, but the staff could perhaps find answers to the council's questions.
The only request would be if it could be the next available hearing, and hopefully not beyond the one, the next available one being the next one, versus having to.
I understand what you're saying.
Subject to advertising guidelines, and of course, the city would move forward in, in good faith. We just need clarity on whether you object or consent to tabling it.
At this point, it looks like it's going to be denied or tabled, I think the applicant would at least like the chance to have it tabled and discussed at a later time to answer all questions, if the good faith effort to allow for advertising being in the next available opening that we can get, even if it had to squeeze in.
Sir, as an engineer, you would have made a phenomenal lawyer. I just, so that's yes, you, you would consent to tabling?
Yes.
Thank you.
And, and if it is tabled, I would suggest to the council that you table it until a date certain, so that then it alleviates some of the advertising requirements, whether it's your next meeting or two meetings from now or whenever.
Councilwoman Reed.
But it's totally up to the council, whether you want to move the table, or whether you want to have a motion fast.
Councilwoman Reed has a question of staff.
Is, is this property ours?
Not our property.
So, the whole thing is his property?
Correct.
The ditch and all?
Correct, and the easement's.
If he wanted the concrete, it's his property, the whole thing.
Well, we've got easements over it.
Yeah, but I mean, it's his property, right?
Correct.
We have an easement to, on the property to allow for the two ditches to connect.
Yeah, if the developer couldn't do anything that would restrict the city's rights to that ditch, which is the conveyance system of stolen water management, so if we did anything in there, even me putting a sign in there, we'd still need a city's approval to put anything in.
Or the water management district.
Thank you. Councilmember Seville.
Yes, thank you.
I was just wanting to direct a question to Mr. DeBolt, to see if we could have our staff go out there and confirm that ditch running from the, running north and south, how far south it runs, not concrete or determined.
Oh, certainly, certainly, we can, yeah.
And could we do that for the next, have that information for us for the next council meeting? So, we're not holding them up?
Yeah.
And I believe that's kind of a lot of the questions that were already asked of the city council to staff.
Either, either way.
It wasn't a new question, it was just clarifying a question.
This property is blocked by two ditches, whether they're state ditch or city ditch. It's not our property, what we were trying, the applicant wants this waiver, we cannot do this administratively, that's why I asked them for counsel. We just felt, you know, strongly that the city should not be responsible for demoing and removing the trees on this property, it's the reason why we kind of leaned towards, you know, making them remove this property, remove these trees.
I agree.
Even with the CIP, I mean, we do plan on CIPs everywhere, clean all of our ditches up, we have that dream. The reality is, we don't have the money for it, and when we do do it, the last thing we want to do is have to go on this property and clean up Brazilian peppers. Yes.
So, the applicant has indicated a willingness to table, if there is such a motion, there is no objection from the applicant. Were you to table your next scheduled meeting? Madam Clerk, can you confirm that's November 13?
Yes, sir.
And that's November 13 is your next scheduled meeting, were you to make a motion to a date certain? I would recommend it be that date, as indicated by staff that they could accomplish things by that date. Failing that, any other motion on the substantive relief sought is also appropriate at this time. And it's entirely possible, for your sake as the applicant, sir, that there may be five members at that subsequent meeting. There's, it is a five-member body, one is absent tonight.
So, do I have a motion of subs?
You do, thank you. I make a, a motion that we deny WAV-0825-00023, public hearing first and final reading.
Second.
Motion has been made in second, denial, with denials, we cannot use our grandicus, so we have to have a roll call vote.
Before we take a roll call vote, I'd just like to be very clear, the motion on the floor has been made in the negative, meaning it has been made to deny the relief. Therefore, in pulling the members on the voice vote, a aye or yes vote is you are in favor of denial.
Appreciate that.
Point of question, Mayor?
Yes.
Is denying it or tabling it what we should be doing? Should we be tabling the either?
That is up to what you feel you should be voting. Right now, the vote is to deny.
Right.
And it's been motioned and seconded.
Right, right now, the motion is to, the motion on the floor right now is to deny.
Yes.
And as Mr. Morris said, if you vote yes, you're voting to deny it.
Correct. Roll call vote by city clerk.
Mr. Seville?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Butler?
Yes.
Ms. Bradbury?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously to deny.
Thank you. Moving on to section four, our consent agendas, item C1.
Item C1 is to approve the designation of council member Ricky Butler to serve as a voting delegate at the National League of Cities Annual Business Meeting, and to approve the designation of councilwoman, Councilwoman Patty Reed to serve as the alternate voting delegate. Item number C2 is to prove authorization for the mayor to sign an easement transfer agreement with Pinellas County, accepting platted easements located within the St. Haggups subdivision. Item number C3 is authorization for the mayor to sign an interlocal agreement between the city of Pinellas Park and the Florida Department of Transportation. Item number C4 is authorization for the mayor to sign an amendment to a drainage, drainage easement agreement between the city of Pinellas Park, OV, and OVSS Gateway LLC and the Gateway Center Property Owners Association, Inc., for the property generally located at 4100 Gateway Center Boulevard. Item number C5 is authorization for the mayor to sign a grant agreement with Florida Department of Law Enforcement Bureau of Criminal Justice Grants, award number JG119, and that's in the amount of $12,938.60 to purchase training mats and car protection equipment. Item number C6 is ordinance number 2025-34, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Pinellas Park, Pinellas County, Florida, amending the code of ordinances by amending chapter 18, Land Development Code, amending section 18-417, appeals and variances, amending section 18-613, sign permit requirement, amending section 18-1-807.1, general, amending section 18-1-807.2, appeals, amending section 18-1-807.3, limitations on authority to grant variances, amending section 18-1-807.6, considerations for issues issuance of variances, amending section 18-1-807.7, conditions for issuances of variances, amending section 18-1501.17, additional duties of the city manager, amending section 18-1501.32, planning and zoning commission, amending section 18-1502.2, definitions, amending section 18-1530.16A, outdoor display and sales of goods and merchandise, amending section 18-1530.23A4, equestrian uses, amending section 18-1531.7B, waivers, variances, modifications, amending section 18-1534.2, table of public notice requirements, amending section 18-1535.1, applicability, amending section 18-1535.3B, procedures, amending section 18-1535.3B, procedures, amending section 18-1535.4, review criteria, amending section 18-1535.6, effective decision by the board, amending section 18-1537.1, board of adjustment, amending section 18-1537.5, appeal of board adjustment decisions, amending section 18-1539.2, procedure, amending section 18-1541.8, appeals, amending section 18-1609, concurrency management panel, providing for the inclusion of such amended ordinance in the code of the city of Pinellas Park, Florida, providing for appeal of ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, to the extent of such conflict, providing for severability, providing for an effective date. Item number C7 is authorization for the city manager to sign an Alanco agreement and purchase Alanco armored rescue vehicle funded by UASI grant and federal forfeiture funds. Item number C8 is to approve authorization to purchase design services provided by Advanced Engineering and Design for $68,610, and that's for the Harmony Heights Phase 1, Phase 1B project. Item number C9 is to approve authorization to make first and final payment for invitation to bid 25.014 roof replacement, and that is in the amount of $115,000, and that is to Rogers Roofing Corporation, DBA Professional Roof Services. And as to this item, I would say that the action item would be to approve it to Rogers Roofing Corp., DBA Professional Roof Systems. Item number C10 is to approve authorization for approval and acceptance of final payment in the amount of $37,621.93 for invitation to bid 25.002 for the teen center remodel to Evolution Contracting LLC. Item number C11 is authorization for the city manager to sign an agreement with Integrated Business Solutions for fleet services and facility-related parts and services. Item number C12 is to, is for approval to enter into a task order for roof replacement at the fire station 34 under invitation to bid 25.009 for trade services, and that's to Allied Roofing, Inc., in the amount of $117,486. Item number C13 is to approve authorization for approval and acceptance of final payment on, under Pinellas County contract for stormwater improvement project 47th Street North, from 78th Avenue North to 82nd Avenue North, for total contract amount of $402,043, and authorization for final payment, MTM Contractor, Inc. Item number C14 is to approve authorization to purchase playground equipment and installation services at Davis Commons from Compan Inc. at a total cost of $1,793,732.56. Item number C15 is to approve authorization to purchase 23 new vehicles under FSA contract Florida Sheriff's Association bid from Stingray Chevrolet Plant City, Florida, at a cost of $1,269,460.35. Item number C16 is to approve authorization to purchase four new vehicles under host sheriff procurement Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office contract, and that's from Furman Ford, Clearwater, Florida, at a cost of $341,444. Item number C17 is to approve authorization for inflow and infiltration system study in the amount of $264,399.99, and that's the end of the consent agenda.
Thank you. Councilwoman Reed.
Thank you. Mayor Bradbury, regarding the consent agenda, I would like to make a motion to pass, approve, or adopt whichever action is appropriate, items C1 through C17, inclusive with item C6 being first reading prior to public hearing. The next public hearing will be held in council chambers on Thursday, November the 13th, 2025, at 6:00 p.m.
Second to motion.
Motion has been made in second. Is there anybody in the audience that has any questions on these items? Items C1 through C17. Seeing none? All those in favor, or actually, yeah, all those in favor? We don't do that. Granicus on that one, aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Moving on to section five, regular agenda, we have none. Section six, council member and staff comments. Councilmember Butler.
Switching it up.
Yes.
Well, first, congratulations to our remaining Citizens Academy folks that, Hank, you just knew that the trees were going to be exciting, so you stayed, and I, I hope we, we gave you what you're looking for there. But no, really appreciate you guys, like I said last night, taking the time, and of course, thanks to Jillian for, for that program. It's just getting to be that time of year where things are really exciting. We've got a lot of events coming up in the city, a lot of fun stuff, so I don't want to steal any Heidi's thunder on that, so I'll let her do that, but just thanks to you all and congratulations again.
Thank you. Councilmember Sebel.
First of all, I need to apologize to Jillian for not thanking you last night. When I got to speak, the first thing I should have said is thank you very much for all your hard work and making that group so happy and making our city shine. I'm thankful that y'all stayed, it wasn't that boring, was it? They're usually not this long. Sometimes we do talk about oak trees.
Sometimes the meeting's only 15 minutes, too.
But it's, I love seeing y'all here tonight, it was, it was great, and please, stay involved. And I just want to, as that, our people stay safe. I know our, you know, our police and fire, and they do a lot of things that I know I wouldn't want to do, I don't care how big the gun was. But I noticed one thing is when we were doing the veterans, you notice how many of those veterans are police officers?
We do.
It was amazing, and they all had big guns. That was even more amazing, but no, really, keep our, keep all of our employees, all of our first responders, in your prayers always, and talk to your neighbors and let them know what a great program it was, and I expect to see y'all here in two weeks. I am taking a roll call. Thank you all very much.
Your hair's green up there. Ms. Patty?
Thank you. Ditto on everything that was said, and thank, congratulations, everybody, hope you guys had a great time for our graduates, and thank to all of our staff and everybody, it's amazing, and it's to have what you heard from Tallahassee come down and, and do that for us, straight out of the mouth, it's just like, they are, I'm, just amazing. So that just, our city, I can't say enough about our village. There is going to be, we're going to have a rodeo coming up, of course, we're talking horses or chickens or anything else like that, but you're actually going to get to see yours truly riding a horse and doing the flag, we're going to have a nice little memorial there, so come out and enjoy it and have a good time, it's, it's time, it's that time of the year. Check on your neighbors, check on your friends, check on your family, just say hello, make sure they're all okay, because sometimes we don't know what the other people are going through, so just make sure and check on them. So that's all I got, but thanks to everybody, too, that makes us look so good, our staff just makes us look amazing, so thank you.
And we're going to change it up a little bit over here, too. Do either one of you guys have anything? No? Dan?
If anybody has stock in, um, sanitizer, you can thank Dan Howard.
Sorry.
He went through a lot, they're all gone, y'all gone.
Clerk's office.
I just, I just have one, one item to mention, next Wednesday, the 29th of October, from 9 to 12, the Pinellas Park Chamber Manufacturing Summit will be held, and it's the cross-pollination of city staff that'll be there assisting, and one, one person got sucked into moderating, but that's okay, one of, one of the panels, but it's a lot of fun, both the manufacturers get to learn about what we do and we learn about what's going, coming, coming our way, so just wanted to mention.
Staff, staff? I know we always have stuff going on. City website, city post on Facebook, TikTok, what else?
Check those things for sure.
Oh, no TikTok?
No, not TikTok.
When it becomes legal?
Maybe. Facebook, Instagram, and website are the go-tos. Like many have said, this is the, the season, it is definitely getting busy around here, there's a lot of things going on, just this Saturday, there are three different things happening. Copper's Halloween is going to be at the Patty Johnson Farm from 10 to 1, there'll be treats, games, and crafts for all. Stages Theater will present Memory Lane this Saturday at 2 o'clock at the Performing Arts Center, doors open at 1 o'clock, and there's no cost for admission. And that evening is going to be the Spooky Cinema, featuring Hotel Transylvania at Skyview Pool, starting at 6 o'clock p.m. You can pre-register for tickets for $10 or $15 at the door, there will be activities before the movie, and snacks and drinks are provided. The Pinellas Park Civic Orchestra will be on October 30th at 7, or 7:30 p.m., sorry, at the Performing Arts Center, and also on November 2nd at 3 o'clock p.m. There is free admission with a suggested donation price of $10. The annual Halloween Tree Trail is going to take place on October 31st at 6 o'clock p.m. at England Brothers Park. The City Brush site is closing after October 31st, you can find more details on Facebook about that. Don't forget that daylight savings time ends on November 2nd, set your clocks back one hour. And the Public Works BBQ and rodeo is happening on November 8th from 12 p.m. to 10 p.m. There will be obviously a great barbecue, a rodeo, live entertainment, there are more details on the city Facebook and website, and vendors and competitors are still wanted for both, so you can learn more about that on, online. On Veterans Day, November 11th, all city staff facilities will be closed. Come hungry for the pancake breakfast on Wednesday, November 12th at 8 a.m. at the Senior Center, $3 for plain pancakes, $4 for blueberry pancakes. The Thanksgiving give, give back is going to be November 15th at 11:30 a.m. to 1 p.m. at Broderick Recreation Center. You can enjoy a free Thanksgiving meal and an opportunity to pay it forward, this will be an afternoon of gratitude, good company, and delicious food. And on the same day, November 15th, is going to be the annual Ag Fest, 10 a.m. to 3 p.m. at the Patty Johnson Farm. There will be a, a poultry show with vendors, activities, and fun for all ages, it's free to attend, you can grab your family and friends, enjoy a day, enjoy a day on the farm.
And there's going to be, all the forage kids are bringing their chickens, we've got chickens, rabbits, some ducks and quail coming out there, and they're all, all the kids are going to be out there, and they're, they are practicing, they're so excited.
Practicing their presentation.
They are, they're out there, and the chicken flies off, and I might catch the chicken and the ducks and all, oh, it is, it's a lot of fun. We're going to have them on, on Monday night, all the kids talking about it, so it'll be good.
Great. The sharing. The one that always is not smiling now. You got anything for us tonight?
I was a lot about the baby.
And thank you for your service, we saw your picture up there earlier when they were doing the veterans. Chiefs?
We're good.
We're good? Well, I think we got it all. My happiest saying is to, like Patty, check on your neighbors, say hello to them, just check to make sure they're having a good day, if they're not, then help them have a good day. And we hope that everybody is blessed for the next couple of weeks till we see you again.[1791.87]